Night Court. It's off Nichols.
So it's not off nude ranch, it's off Nichols?
Yeah, it's called Night Court.
No, I clue.
I'm not sure where that's at either. I don't think so. I'm trying to remember where that's at. It was one of the priorities, I'm sure. Just like six on the list.
You're pretty savvy with that, sir.
Not finding what I'm looking for though.
Good evening, folks. We're in a call meeting to order. If you please join me for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, if the rest of you would, please make sure your light is on. Mine was not. And we'll have a roll call, please.
Alderman Becker?
Here.
Alderman Schuman?
Here.
Alderman Rucker?
Here.
Alderman Osteen?
Here.
Alderman Marose?
Here.
Alderman Ross?
Here.
Mayor Harmison?
Here. All right. First thing is mayor's communication. We do have one thing tonight. It's proclamation for the Constitution Week, September 17th through the 23rd, 2022. Whereas September 17th, 2022 marks the 235th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention outlining the fundamental principles by which our nation is governed. And whereas our Constitution, the guardian of our liberties, embodies and principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to the rule of law and establishing basic governor principles in society. These include popular sovereignty, federalism, judicial review, individual rights, and separation of powers through a system of checks and balances. And whereas in 1955, the Daughters of the American Revolution began the traditional celebration of the Constitution, a resolution was later adopted by the US Congress and signed into public law on August 2nd, 1965 by President Dwight D. Eisenhower. And whereas the Daughters of the American Revolution, Wahazi, Chapter S D A R, Lake of the Ozarks, considered a privilege and duty to celebrate this magnificent documentation and memorial anniversary. Now therefore, I, Michael Harmison, Mayor, do hereby proclaim, September 17th through the 23rd, 2022, as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reflect on the ideals outlined in the Constitution of the United States as amended over time and recognize the efforts and sacrifices of not only our nation's founding fathers, the crafters of our Constitution, but also the brave individuals that have defended it and reaffirmed the ideals of the Constitution by diligently protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. In testimony whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city, Osage Beach, to be affixed this 15th day of September, 2022. All right. Thank you. I think we have somebody here that's going to come up and we'll get a picture or presentation of the proclamation.
Mike, can you move it up here?
Yes, please. Yes, go on right up here if you would, folks.
Sure.
Who wants that?
We do. Why don't you get here in the middle of us?
The ranger gets it.
We normally say, "Say cheese." I just happen to own a cheese store down the road, Harmy's Cheese Store. All right. Thank you very much. That was very nice. All right. Moving on, we're going to go to citizens' communications. This is a time set aside on the agenda for citizens and visitors to address the mayor and board on any topic that is not upon public hearing. For those here in person, speakers will be restricted to three minutes unless otherwise permitted. Minutes may not be donated or transferred from one speaker to another. Visitors attending via online will be in listen-only mode. Any questions or comments for the mayor and board may be sent to thecityclerk@tbreth@osagebeach.org no later than 10:00 AM on the board meeting day. The first and third Thursday of each month, submitted questions and comments may be read during the citizens' communications section of the agenda. The Board of Aldermen will not take any action on any item not listed on the agenda, nor will it respond to questions, although staff may be directed to respond at a later time. The mayor and the Board of Aldermen welcome and value input and feedback from the public. Is there anyone here in person who would like to address the board? And if so, please come up and sign in, and you'll have three minutes. Come on up, sir. If you would please sign in and...
Good evening. It's nice to be here. My name is Ronald Bly. I was a mayor of Eldon for 26 years, so I was involved in a lot of issuance of bonds and done other programs and worked closely with the governor on a lot of different issues, including the then-Johnson Controls, which was a Chapter 100. And if you're not familiar with that, which you probably aren't, it more than doubled the workforce at Johnson Controls. So I've been there and done that, so I'll make it brief, so, you know, I know how much you guys hate somebody up here talking, okay? Anyway, my question was that I have become aware of the city of Osage Beach considering issuing bonds on the construction of apartment buildings on the site of the Osage Beach Outlet Mall. And I'm kind of troubled by it because there's a lot of jobs to be lost and a lot of jobs to be gained by the proposal to renovate the mall, put recreational activities and apartment buildings on the mall site, which the first would totally tear down the entire mall facility. And I think it can still be a great tourist attraction in the future. And I'd like some sort of an explanation at some point in time why that first proposal to renovate the mall was not follow-through with, but this project seemingly may go forward. So I really think there's a lot of jobs to be gained and a lot of jobs to be kept by keeping the mall as it is, and a lot of people's livelihoods depend on it. And I really appreciate your time. And Gina, you're totally fortunate to have her. Gina's husband was one of the best police officers I ever had in Eldon, and I think I even tried to hire Gina away from me at one point in time. But just because I've been through more than my share of city administrators, I know she's a good one. So you're fortunate to have her. So thank you for your time. I appreciate it. And have a great evening.
Thanks, Ron.
Thank you very much. All right. Anyone else who would like to speak?
Hi.
Good evening. If you would, please sign in.
I did.
Oh, very good. Thank you.
Got you there. My name's Gary Johnson. I'm the president of Grand Harbor Homeowners Association, and I wanted to talk a little bit about the work that we've tried to do with the city to get our pool back. In the winter and spring of 2021, we had a hard freeze. The city sewer line broke next to our pool and filled our pool with raw sewage. Our pool was already half-full, because we have to leave it half-full, because if we don't during the winter, since our pool is very unique, it could pop out of the ground, so we have to keep it half-full all the time. City hired a contractor to come in and fix their part of that problem, and in the process, they dug up all of our lawn, tore up all of our shrubs, cut a huge swath through our pool, and left it in two pieces, came back, concreted it in, which left a mess, because we can't even use the pool deck, because the job that they did of putting the pool back together is terrible. You can't walk on it with your bare feet. Kids can't go down there. We've been doing this now for two full seasons. We've lost two full seasons of our pool. After the city got what they needed done, they and the contractor walked away, and we were left with that mess. We met with the city. City indicated that they wanted us to find a contractor to fix the pool, because they couldn't do it since it was on private property. We understood that. We began the process and spent about... We finally found... Well, I wasn't involved in it at that point in time. I was at that meeting. Terry and Ed, who was the president at that time, started looking for contractors that could come in and fix our pool and do something with it. They could not find anybody. Nobody wanted to deal with it. The people I did talk to would not accept the liability because they were afraid the pool would pop out of the ground and they would be responsible for the damage that was caused. I became president in August of 81, or 82, I guess. 92. Time flies when you're having fun. 22. And so consequently, I started looking, along Terry continued to do that. We finally found somebody who restores pools, because our problem is not fixing our pool, it's restoring our pool. So we had to find somebody that we need to restore the pool. Again, the city had told us, "Find somebody. We'll work with them. We'll try and get this done, and we'll move on." So consequently, we did that. Finally, had to wait to get our proposal because of winter and COVID and a bunch of other crap going on in our world as we know it, and submitted that. City rejected that. And then I got a letter from the city administrator indicating that they were offering us $19,200 for a pool that was going to cost a lot more than that to fix, and invoked at that point in time both God and the King, saying it was an act of God, and the city had sovereign immunity, which it was the first time... I've been an educational administrator for 42 years, higher ed, and I've never gotten a letter invoking both God and sovereign immunity and the King in the same letter. So that was a new one for me. So we tried to... We found somebody. We kept working on that. The mayor helped us with that. He worked with our pool person to try to get them to see what we could do to pare down the bid that we got. Again, we were told to find somebody to fix it. We only found one person. We spent six months trying to find somebody that could do the job. And we finally found that. Then they rejected that again. That's been rejected several times. Finally, they came back to us and said, "We need to... We got some things we want to do. We want to be able to drill some holes in the pool to see if there's a void down there." And there is. So then we worked with that. We allowed the city to come in, since you don't have an easement on our property, so we had to grant you permission to come in and do it. We found that there's a void there. And so now we're trying to figure out, okay, so what's the next step? The city then came back with another proposal that was a fix, but it didn't involve certainly our pool person, that was a restoration person, simply involved a construction person that they hired, or at least they were going to try and put bids out to get somebody to do it. We were concerned about that, because our pool is very unique. It sits on a bed of rock, and a bed of water, lake water. It's affected by the lake. Every time the lake goes up and down, our pool's affected. And so it has to be grounded in a certain way, and if it's not grounded properly, somebody can get electrocuted. That's a serious problem. We're also concerned about the fact that under the pool deck is a dried mess of human feces that's been there for months upon months upon months. And we're concerned about what are the implications of any of that seeping into our system. We don't know whether our pool, our pumps, our heater, any of our pipes are infiltrated with bacteria from all of that sewage that sat in our pool for a long period of time. So we're very concerned about that. We finally looked at it. We talked to them, and they said, "We're done. We've tried everything." And to get even the proposal the city came back with was not going to fix our pool. It's going to leave our pool cut in half, looking like crap. We've gone two seasons. People won't come back to the condos. Lots of kids can't come, because they want a pool. Not everybody likes to swim in the lake. And so we've been with two years without our pool, while we're trying to get some action, something done, and get the city to follow through with what they said they would do. Make us whole on our pool and get back to where we were. I mean, again, we didn't start this thing, and I don't think... God is not in charge of sewage. I don't care what anybody says. And the only kingdom in Missouri is the Kingdom of Callaway. I spent 10 years at the University of Missouri, and I learned that while I got a PhD. And Osage Beach is not a kingdom, so the kingdom doesn't impact us here either. And so we're just asking for help. Again, the mayor's tried to help us. Alderman Ross has tried to help us. My contact has always been Mike. Trying to get something done. We're trying to get action. We're trying to get our pool back. We've gone two seasons. We do not want to go another season. And we're running out of time. And so, you know, please help us.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? If you would please sign in, if you have not already.
I promise I won't go over the three minutes. My name's Chad Kouts. I own Wicked Willie Sports Grill right down the road here. I also live at Grand Harbor. Small complex, one building, nine units, and we used to have a lovely pool in our backyard until in January, February of '21, when we got that hard freeze, and your sewer line, which has no easement rights to be on our property to begin with, ruptured and filled our pool with sewage water. We have gone two seasons without a pool. The city has admitted guilt that it's their fault, and they would help us take care of this problem. Well, now we've been told nothing but lies. They have fought us every inch of the way. This is not a typical pool in somebody's backyard. It's a very complex pool and how close it sits to the water. You guys think you can slap some duct tape on it and it's going to be fine? Well, that's not going to happen. The integrity of the pool has disappeared. The bonding wire, which could cause somebody to get electrocuted and lose their lives, has been ripped out from around our pool. All that has to come up, and it has to be safe for their grandkids, for me, any guests we have come over. You guys dug up the ground, fixed your pipe, and then did a terrible job at repairing it, and you didn't even clean up the sewage that's in the ground. You just put dirt over it and thought you'd be done with it. We have three homeowners there that own businesses in Osage Beach, and this is how you guys are treating us. Just telling us to go away and giving us these low figures to fix our pool. And it's not right. It's not the right thing to do. The mayor himself has tried to get you guys on board to pay for something that was your fault, not our fault, and you guys are fighting him on it, too. So I think you guys, being elected official, know the difference between right and wrong, and you need to do what's right and fix our pool. Because if we have to take this to court, it's going to cost the city a lot more money than what it stands at right now. So I want you to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else who would like to speak?
Hi, everybody. I'm Janice Gentile. I'm president...
Could you stand over in front of the microphone, please?
I'm sorry. I'm president and CEO of Branches for the Lake, a newly formed not-for-profit to assist with the development of the trails for the lake area. And I wanted to speak in support of N, which is Bill 22-77. And we think this is the agreement between the city and local council of governments. It's a wonderful opportunity for us to expand the sidewalks, to have connectivity, and for the trails, pedestrian walkways, as well as the bridges in our community. So we'd like you to consider that as a positive response. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Terry. I'm the vice president of Grand Harbor. My fellow neighbors here have pretty much covered a lot of things, but I can't stress to you how important this is. They're a little off on their dates and times, but this has been going on two and a half years. Gary's worked on it six. I've been at it two and a half. A lot of my free time. Every time we almost reach the goalpost of everything that you ask, it gets moved. We have done everything in good faith. As he said, there was no easement down the whole valley. We gave the easement so that everybody could have sewer up and down through there coming into the summer season. It was up in our pool, running over our deck and into the lake, and it didn't intend to stop. Mr. Welty has been out time and time again... Oh, he gives me pains in my head. I can't take any more of it. So, in the height of the summer after this happened, we tried to get every single person in town, which is only about five professional pool companies, to come and fix our pool. Nobody wanted to touch it. One, because they were already busy, which I get, but two, they kept saying the pool was going to come out of the ground. It went on and on. So we bring our own engineer from Chicago. He gives his report and his opinion. And it still goes on. Then Mr. Welty gets calls us all up to the city hall. We have a meeting. Your insurance agent was on presumed call, and everybody agrees and states that, you know, he's the man in charge of this. And if we can find somebody to restore our pool, that he'll get the bills paid, and they'll be paid quicker, because he won't have to put it in the public paper. So, and again, here we are, back to square one. We've contacted all the pools. Gary and I have been through every single pool in the state of Missouri. Nobody really wants to do the restoration, because it could come out. Our pool is unique. That's what they've just told you. It is next to the lake. You all gave a permit. We have a copy of it, and it's right next to the lake. Just being a small concrete deck in between, that lake water comes up. It's sitting in lake water all summer. You know, this has been two and a half years. Our own Alderman, two and a half years. He comes out a couple weeks ago, and they all want to start from square one. What? Are you kidding me? I've been at this two and a half years. Now, saying, "Oh, we're going to forget all that. We're going to start from square one. We're going to... Oh, we're going to help you now." Well, you know what? I think the helping now comes up to the fact that Gary found ASP pools. He sure did. An expert in restoration, which happens to be in our own town. Welty told us to find a man. We found the man. What he told us was that they didn't have to like their family. Well, and that includes our father-in-laws. So, I'm here to tell you, this is ridiculous. Whatever little deal's going on with that, you better put it aside. I need my property restored. I need my pool fixed. It's causing way too many problems. And if you don't understand, because Welty and Ross and Mr. Cook told us, "We can sand this down." No, this has only been a couple weeks ago, after we've talked to expert upon expert for over two years. They tell us, "We can sand this down." Mr. Cook says, "We'll throw shock in the pool, and you'll be good to go." No, no, not according to pool professionals. We have a dangerous situation, folks. The mayor's been the only one that's tried to help us. He explained to all of you the importance and the dangers of our pool. Nobody seems to get this. Nobody wants to understand it, and I'll tell you why. I brought my pool man here today. He's going to come up, and he's going to tell you the dangers of our pools. You people wouldn't have this in your... You would not have this at your own homes. You would not put your children and your grandchildren and everybody and your families in danger, and I'm not going to allow it either. So, that's where we're at. $19,000 for a bid was an absolute joke. It wouldn't even fix the concrete or the bonding grid to keep us from being electrocuted. Now, you guys got to wake up. You just have to wake up. I'm not taking any more. I'm done with it. I'm done with it. I'd like for my pool man here, so that everybody fully understands and who's going to accept the liability of my kids getting electrocuted.
Thank you very much. Okay, that's enough. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to come up and speak, please?
Hi, Dan. My name's Mike Sessing. I'm the owner of ASP Pools. I was asked to come up and talk to you guys about what's going on at that location. After the sewer line busted, it did cause a lot of damage underneath the concrete. It also caused damage inside the pool itself, busting tiles, messing plaster up, and possibly damaging the actual plumbing that's underneath the ground. What they're talking about is the bonding of the concrete of the deck. And it is right. The bonding per electrical code, which by the city ordinance, you have to follow. You have to have continuous bonding through the entire deck, and that also includes any other metal objects that's connected to the deck. When the concrete was cut from one side of the deck all the way to the other, it separated that bonding. So to have that continuous bonding, it's not there anymore. Unfortunately, that's just what happens if you have to cut that all the way across. The other part with the sewer going on the bottom, as I informed them, well, that should be a concern, because different diseases like cryptosporidium comes from sewage underneath the... I mean, it comes from basically feces of any animal. It could be geese, you know, doing feces on the ground. It could be human feces, but it can come from that. And it is a dangerous disease. You know, as for the bid itself to do the repairs, and we restructured the bid, as I told Mike before, that the original bid, we tried to look for unforeseen circumstances. You know, our company is specialized in major renovations. We travel all across the United States to different classes, including Genesis. We're one of the very few companies in Missouri that does major renovations. And, you know, we bid it out as, you know, for the unforeseen circumstances, but obviously coming back and asking for more money would just end up delaying the project even more. So we restructured the bid again, saying, "Look, this is..." With taking out any extra to make sure that we have it for the... Any unforeseen circumstances, this is what it's going to be. It ended up being about $170,000, that would be including taking up the deck, redoing the bonding, making it safe again. It's in rough shape now. I mean, it's real rough. It's going to take a lot of work. And they were talking about the pool being able to pop out of the ground, which is true. They've got safety measures in place at that pool to be able to take off that deck without it popping out of the ground. You'd have to put a sump pump in. It basically pumps groundwater from underneath, so that way the pool doesn't pop up. And actually, any pool can pop up with groundwater. It basically turns into a boat. If you think a boat, floats up. Same thing could happen to that and would cause a lot more damage. So we'd be able to put a sump up in, get that water out, get that fixed, repaired, and done correctly. As I told them, me and no other legitimate company that does it would be willing to touch that thing without doing it correctly. One, because the main reason is safety aspects. You know, if someone did get shocked inside that pool, which is what the bonding is for, it could kill somebody. You know, no one's going to want to take that liability. I don't know if there's any other questions, but...
Thank you very much. Anybody else like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Jane Wright. I am president of the Community Foundation of the Lake. Our mission is to help assist in building cultural, health, economic development here at the lake. And to that regard, I'm here to speak about your new business, N, Bill 2277, on the local government's grant, Lake of the Ozarks Reconnecting Communities Project Grant. We do believe that that will help develop... We do believe that that will help develop economically the lake by building trails, hiking and biking trails around the lake area, and really further develop the community health-wise for residents and for tourists alike. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else like to speak? All right. Before moving on to approval and consent agenda, just FYI for those from Grand Harbor that are still here, your Q on the agenda, however, unless I get some objections from the aldermen, I'm gonna move that to the first on the agenda so we can discuss that to begin with. At this time, we're gonna move on to this consent agenda. If the board so desires, a consent agenda may be approved by a single motion. We have the minutes from the alderman meeting, special alderman meeting, August 31st, as well as the minutes of the board of alder meeting from September 1st, 2022, and also the bills list September 15th, 2022. Do you have any comments, questions, corrections from the board, or do I have a motion to approve?
Question.
Yes, sir. Alderman Rucker.
Item Q, you wanna move to where?
I'm gonna move it to the beginning of new business.
So you're gonna replace, you're gonna put it at first and move the public hearings beyond that?
No, new business, very first thing, yes. It'll be Q and then A. But any approval on consent agenda?
So moved.
Alderman Ross, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Becker, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Consent agenda carries. All right, next we're gonna move on to unfinished business. We have Bill 22-63, an ordinance of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to execute the Missouri's Highway and Transportation Commission Transportation Alternatives Funds Program Agreement to fund pedestrian improvements for Highway 42 sidewalk project. This is the second reading. Assistant City Administrator Mike Welty, please.
I have nothing to add unless there's any questions.
Any comments or questions from the board? Do I have a motion to approve second reading? So moved. I'm sorry, I didn't see who was there. Alderman Becker, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Schuman, roll call, please.
Alderman Rose.
Yes.
Alderman Rucker.
Yes.
Alderman Becker.
Yes.
Alderman Schubert.
Yes.
Alderman Ross.
Yes.
Alderman Osteen.
Yes.
All right. Motion carries. All right, moving on to new business. Do I have any objection from the alderman if I move item Q, which is Bill 2276 first? Seeing none, all right. Bill 22-76 is an ordinance of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, authorizing and directing the city administrator to contract with American Swimming Pool Company to repair, clean, sanitize the pool and decking at Grand Harbor Condo Association in the amount not to exceed $117,456.39 as settlement for damage to the Grand Harbor pool which occurred during the winter of 2021 due to freezing of the sewer pipe located adjacent to the pool. This is the first reading, and I'm gonna take this one. This is one I requested to be on the agenda. You heard several people come up here from, from the Grand Harbor condo. When I was elected, I was found out about this problem, reached out to them, I went to the pool, took a look at the damage. Everything they were saying is true, the things that Michael with ASP said is true. I started doing some research on this. This all happened back on April 9th, 2021, when the city was advised that there was a stench coming from the pool, and yes, the pool is filled up with sewage. The next day, the city paid for the septic to be drained and filed an insurance claim. And the more I dug into this, the more I wondered why in the heck we didn't take care of this. Now, I ran on working with citizens and businesses here in Lake, Lake of the Ozarks, Osage Beach, and even our own mission statement that was adopted in April 7th this year is to provide superior municipal services. Municipal services simply is, city services refer to the basic services a residence of the city expects the city government to provide in exchange for taxes and citizens pay. These folks at Condo Harbor have been paying their taxes, they've been paying for their water and sewage, and through no fault of their own, a sewer line of the city broke. And in 2005, the city gave them a permit to build the pool where it was, which is literally this close to the pool. It burst legally, and I've talked with the city attorney about this, legally, we might be able to fight this, we might be able to say sovereign immunity, we might be able to say it's an act of God, but it's, it's my personal belief that it's time to take care of these people's pool. When I did meet with Mike, with ASP Pool Company, the first bid was 74,000, 174 and some change, and again, he did not know what had happened. He thought that would be going in and, and taking out the sewage, and that had already been done. So after we talked more about that, he came down with a bid of what's on the agenda, 117 plus. And that still is on the high side. Within that bill is listing pumps, it lists the new pipes, it lists, once they remove the decking, how much needs to be repaired, all that's a guess. This is listed on the high side. If they don't need to repair some of the pipes, if they don't need to repair some of the electrical work, if they don't need as much of the underground decking repaired, then that bill will come down from there. That's why I had it listed, not to exceed $117,000. So, that's why I put it on the agenda. The city has already invested $10,000 in third-party fees, experts so-called, to tell us that that $117,000 bid is too much. And I think those funds could have been better spent fixing these people's pool. So, that's why I wanted this put on the agenda, and we've received several different bids, and like Mike said, nobody else has wanted to touch this. They can get this done, we can make this pool right, we can move on, and the citizens of Osage Beach can know that their elected official did the right thing by them, and that their tax dollars are used to protect them in events like this. And so that's why it's on the agenda for tonight. So, with that being said, do I have any comments or questions from the board?
You just said that we'd received several.
Alderman Rucker.
You said we see several bids on this. We've not received several bids.
No, they reached out for several other people to bid, and only one would even touch it with a bid.
I thought you said we had received several.
If I did, I misspoke. My apologies. Alderman Becker.
Everybody up here knows, I have not been opposed to fixing this problem. What I am opposed to is a single-source bid. And I was led to believe that there could be other vendors in the area that could do this work. If I've been misled, I've been misleded. I, I don't know. If we get a couple more bids and they all come in at 117, so be it. I'm good with it. I've said that all along, but I'm, I'm opposed to a single-source bid.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Alderman Rose.
Obviously, we are all very sympathetic. It's tragic what's happened, and I can't imagine myself being in that situation in that neighborhood. But we've never, since I've been on the board, paid anything unless we had estimates more than just one bid per se. I'm not disputing, but in some ways I am, and I'm thinking of the, the cost of the wiring, the cost of the plumbing, the concrete, the prices have gone up since these figures were. But the point being is that this is one company, and they've reached out to a lot of other companies that we've been told. I just wonder, I just, I just, we've, we're going against what we, what our standards are, that we always pay when we have an estimated bids, to get a fair equation of what is fair. And I'm not saying this is fair or not fair, but I just, I would feel much better if we had more, more to stand by.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Alderman Rucker.
We generally, or not generally, we do put together a scope of work, something that says what we want done, so that we protect the citizens' dollars, so we spend the taxpayers' money. That's my fiduciary responsibility, I was elected to, and I take that extremely seriously. If we can't get multiple bids or more than one bid, what we have always been able to rely upon is engineering estimates. We don't have that either. Excuse me. We do have some engineering estimates that are extremely less. That's what we had in the beginning. We provided information to the association, we provided scope of, of work information that could be used to go out, and that was refused by the association. So, all we're trying to do, and I echo what Alderman Becker said, the amount that it costs is what the amount is that it's gonna cost, but we have to protect and do our job and give us some other bids, or give us some engineers that can justify what it is, or give us some way to quantify the amount of the work that's to be done. That's what we've been asking for, and we haven't received that. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Alderman Osteen.
Yes. Since this issue is now part of the public domain, I think there are a few things we need to reiterate and make sure they're part of the public record. The mayor did state some of this, I just want to reiterate. This occurrence was first brought to the attention of the city in April of 2021. The timeframe of two years and two and a half years have already been stated this evening. Once again, that was 17 months ago. It may seem like semantics, but that's the difference between saying something happened last week and it actually happened last February. Want to make sure that people are clear on that. The city did immediately remediate the problem, they did execute an engineer's report that was completed in May of 2021, which was then turned over to the HOA in June of 2021. The recommendation at that time was for the HOA to secure bids for the repair of the pool. I understand the issues with trying to get those bids. I understand people not wanting to do those and the difficulties that you had with that. But, once again, a public record, we received our first bid for that repair work 11 months later, May of 2022. That bid was not to repair the pool, that bid was to replace the pool, converting it from a, its current state into a saltwater pool. That's a little different than saying we want it basically fixed to the state it was in when the incident occurred. That was a pie in the sky, let's shoot for the moon and not just repair it, let's ask for an all-new saltwater pool. Anyway, just wanted to reiterate that as well, so that is part of public record. That is why that first bid was rejected immediately, because we have a fiduciary responsibility to taxpayers to basically spend the money in a sound manner. Obviously, and I understand from the HOA as well, that that was never your real intention with that bid. It's just what you had received, therefore that was passed on. So the issue we have right now is not necessarily that we are not wanting to repair the pool, it's just we have an issue with the bids we received. Piggybacking on what has been said, though, once again, we've got one bid from one company. Obviously, anytime you're gonna do work on your personal home, you would probably get a few bids and compare them. That is where we're at a standoff with the HOA regarding this issue. And once again, we have never denied the issue was our fault, we've never denied that we would like to repair the pool, it's just at what number will that occur? That's all.
Alderman Ross.
Thank you. First of all, I want to say I appreciate the mayor's efforts in trying to resolve this. There's been a unique, how would I say, calamity of, of actions that have happened here. Normally, what would happen is insurance companies get involved, and for whatever reason, from the last I understand, you also have it in, turned into your insurance company, and that's fine, that's your, that's your right. We did, as I understand it, turn it into our insurance company, but it wasn't covered because it was damaged from lines that are underground, and that is an exclusion in our policy. So that process, though, I just described, put us in the unique situation of having become adjusters, okay? And what, as we got involved in this, and some of the information has been put out there, we had under, I think we quickly realized whenever we had numbers that were three and four times differences, so we, we had staff with an engineer's estimate of $29,000, I think originally, then we had an independent engineer's estimate of $40,000, and at that time, we were looking at an estimate of 175,000, around that number. Later, it came back to us with those, still those estimates, that, that number should be 117,000. And at that point, it seemed like that no one, there had no, no one had agreed upon what the scope of work was. There was a lot of confusion of what should be included. And so I, the board asked, if someone, I think the mayor asked if someone would take point, the board asked if I would, to try to determine what the scope of work was, and then we could put it out to bid. We worked through that process, we used input from the, this homeowner association, the POA, we used our engineer that we have on staff through Cochrane Engineering, we used our observations, our public works supervisor, and tried to determine what we thought was a fair scope of work. It included replacing half of the concrete around that pool deck, okay? It included making sure that it was bonded. It included understanding what the voids were underneath the pool and what needed to be done to remediate that. Now, we knew that there may be some change orders, but at least we had a base scope of work so that we could bid it out apples to apples. We presented that to the association and they said, "No, thank you." We never got an opportunity to bid that. For all we know, that could have went out to bid to two or three contractors, and that amount, the low bid could have been $117,000, and you could have hired whoever you wanted. But we were never given that opportunity. We have considered this before, there was no support. We'll see now, at this point, I still have no support, because until there's an agreed-upon scope of work that can be sent out to qualified contractors, and by the way, we were willing to try to find qualified contractors to help these folks, which isn't usually our role. But until that occurs, I am not going to support on one bid, much like Ms. Alderman Rose said, one bid that is three times, as much as three to four times more than what the engineers are saying the estimate should be. There should be a second bid at least, and I believe that those are possible, they are not that hard to get, you just have to maybe take a different approach and have a different area of expertise than maybe these folks have. And that's what we tried to offer. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the board? All right. Do I have a motion to approve first reading? Seeing done, the motion dies. All right. Now, moving on to the next new business, a public hearing, Lake Regional Health System endorsement request for critical care transport truck. City Administrator Gina Woods, please.
Oh, gosh, sorry, I was pulling my police papers. This is a request from the Lake Regional Health System. They're seeking a resolution of endorsement from the city of Osage Beach to pursue an ambulance service, and I know that I have a representative some here, yes, thank you, with the hospital, and I know that they'll, they'll do a, a quick rundown, too. We're required, per the state statute, for any new ground licensee, that since we have the ambulance, that a public hearing is required, so this is why that's on the agenda. Should, should everything go right, next agenda, you'll actually have an actionable item, but I will let the hospital representatives explain exactly what they're asking for, for service license for a transport truck.
All right. Thank you for having us. My name is Sean Andreessen, I'm the director of emergency services at Lake Regional Health System. Marson Maxwell, manager of regulatory compliance and risk management, has joined me. In compliance with RSMO 190109, we come before you this evening to seek endorsement from the city of Osage Beach for the purpose of deploying a critical care transport truck, designated specifically to assist with the transport of critically ill patients to a higher level of care. The purchase of this truck was made by grant monies received by the CARES Act funding, awarded to our organization during the COVID-19 pandemic. In addition to this service, we'll provide public health with no added cost for the community. Financial investments related to the operation, maintenance of the transport truck will be absorbed by Lake Regional Health System, enhancing the availability of critical care services for the community with no added cost to the city or its residents. The service is non-competitive with area ambulance districts and will be utilized to transport critically ill patients only. Transport assignments are both time and labor-intensive, often resulting in a depleted emergency response fleet. The deployment of this truck will allow surrounding ambulance districts to keep more ambulances in service, 24/7, seven days a week. While the transport truck will probably be, will properly be staffed by, staffed and furnished to transport our sickest patients, it will not be equipped to respond to emergency response. For this reason, mutual aid will not be possible at this time. Operations for the truck will be overseen by myself and in partnership with Dr. Joe Sohal. Together, we have an excess of over 30 years combined experience in critical care and emergency medicine. Under the direction of a skilled team of EMTs, paramedics, nurses, and respiratory therapists, we will ensure that our patients reach their destination safely. Competency of these individuals will be evaluated by the health system and required by the regulatory standards. Once this public hearing has concluded, and assuming endorsement from the city have obtained, the state application process the state application process will commence. As anticipated, the truck will be available for service in 60 to 120 days post-application acceptance. Lake Regional Health System strives to provide exceptional health care. With your support, we hope to further enhance our critical care capabilities and include the ability to transport our sickest patients safely and in a timely manner. The advance will not only benefit Lake Area residents, but the city and local ambulance districts as well with no added cost. Thank you in advance for your consideration of this request. Do you have any questions?
All right, comments or questions from the board? Alderman Becker.
I just have a couple of comments. This is an extremely valuable asset to our community. Those of you that know my past, some may not, as a fire chief, and not only of a fire department, but prior to being a fire chief here, fire chief of a fire and EMS department, providing EMS services, it is extremely valuable to have a transport unit. I was fortunate when I was fire chief of the EMS and fire, I was in the metropolitan St. Louis area, and there wasn't a need. As you get outstate Missouri, the value is just unbelievable. One point was that maybe was said that I missed, but I think was failed to be mentioned, is think of the fact of you have a critically injured, critically wounded, critical person at the hospital that needs to go to another facility, and it's starving. The helicopter is done. What are they going to do? They're going to have to have ambulance services. They're going to take one of our ambulances that are providing emergency service. What happens during rainstorms? Accidents. One of our local units is being pulled away somewhere else. It's part of life, but we have just provided an extreme valuable piece of that that will help provide the services to our community. I fully support it, and I applaud you guys for doing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Alderman Becker.
So what would be a specific example of the use of this? I'm not against it, I just don't understand it completely.
Okay. I currently, I worked on the helicopter service for 18 years, and we have weather minimums, and when the weather is bad, the helicopter cannot fly. And it's very frustrating sometimes to be able to find an ambulance service that is able to give us an ambulance to transfer somebody to Columbia. So if you have a burned patient or a head trauma patient, it's difficult to get them out of there, to get them to a higher level of care, the care they receive. If we have an ambulance there, we can do rapid transport and get the patients where they need to be seen.
You don't already do this?
We do, but it can be very time-consuming to find an ambulance available to even transport these patients. We've seen it where it's taken up to two to four hours to get someone out of there. That really, it's time-critical.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? No? Thank you very much.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to say that from the legal point of view, Lake Regional has been wonderful to deal with, and their attention to detail and their follow-up on the statute's been meticulous. And if they take care of their patients the way they take care of their paperwork, you're in good hands.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We just have to ask anybody who's here to speak on it.
I'm sorry?
Just a hearing, yeah.
Public hearing closed?
Well, if anybody in the audience...
On the next one?
This one. This is its own public hearing.
Oh, anyone else want to speak on behalf of, I mean, okay, yeah, you could have just said that for me.
Well, no, they already just said that.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak on behalf of the comments they made? Because this is a public hearing. All right.
Public hearing closed.
Public hearing closes, thank you.
There's another public hearing, so I'll get this one right, I'm guessing.
Next, we have a public hearing development proposal for the preserve at Sycamore Creek. City Attorney Ed Rucker.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. We have two ordinances on for tonight for first reading, Bill 2274 and Bill 2271, that are necessary for the development called the Preserve at Sycamore Creek, which is brought to you by Tegatoff Development. Part of the law requires that we hold a public hearing. The notice for the public hearing will be published, the official public hearing will be the 6th of October. However, our board has always had a public hearing when they first had a glimpse of a project. In other words, the first time it sets up on the agenda. With that in mind, we set a public hearing for tonight, too, so we can get any comments that we need out today. Mr. Tegatoff and his development team are here, I believe they have a few small comments, and then the floor should be open for anyone else who wants to comment about this development proposal. Mr. Tegatoff, welcome.
Thank you. It's good to be back here. I'm Jeff Tegatoff from Tegatoff Development. This is Alan Witt, he's our Vice President of Development. I know we've been in front of you guys a number of times, but a quick refresher. I'm 47 years old, my family's owned a home in the Lake of the Ozarks area since I was born. I was fortunate enough to meet my wife here. My wife's a former employee of the hospital, she was an occupational therapist. We lived in Sunrise Beach for a while. This project, the genesis of this project, came about after meeting my wife and finding out like she, what a hard time it was to find housing down here. And as I met more of her friends who worked at the hospital and around the lake, as an apartment developer, I obviously saw a need to be filled for quality new housing. We develop what we say is a curated collection of trophy properties. We've developed around 2,600 apartment units since 2016, all in the Midwest. Our offices are in St. Louis and Indianapolis, we've developed in Kansas City. Cincinnati are kind of our primary markets, St. Louis, Kansas City, Cincinnati. And total of around $700 million worth of projects, we have currently $400 million under construction. Some of our representative projects, I think it's important to note, we are not a build-um, fill-um, and flip-um type of developer. Our mantra is to develop, to own forever. So this is a project that we would intend to own for a generation. We think that's important, because we make decisions not just on the site-specific location, but on the quality of building materials and the quality of the plumbing fixtures, with our intention to own projects for long periods of time. We definitely have higher quality fit and finish, as well as exterior facades, windows, things like that. We don't want to be replacing them every few years. We've put together a project team of architect who we've worked with on over 1,000 units out of St. Louis, TRI. We've engaged local contractor Thomas Construction to build the project for us and are working with them to ensure as much local participation in the subcontract pool as possible. We're obviously engaging local civil engineers and other local subcontractors as we can. The overall project is just over $60 million. It's 268 units of one, two, and three-bedroom units. There's also a 7,500-square-foot clubhouse, fitness center, kind of co-working suites for people. There's a pool, there's a dog park, there's, you know, first-class amenities that you would see in cities like St. Louis and Kansas City, and definitely a product that's never been offered down here. I know of the capital stack, of the $63 million, the first $20 million that goes into this project is my cash equity into the project. Banks don't, the first money banks require to go into a project is cash from me. So myself and my company will have $20 million invested in this project first, it'll be the first $20 million in. We are requesting a tax abatement that steps down over the course of 20 years. 100% for the first five years, 75% for the next five, 50% for the following five, and then 25%. As well, a sales tax exemption on construction materials that are bought outside the area. And then a reimbursement of certain tap fees, I believe through a program that the city always already has in place. We've been fortunate to work very intimately with the Cars family, who currently owns the property, as well as would be our neighbors. They would still have the property across the street. They've been great to work with. Obviously, they're extraordinarily familiar with the property, and they've had some incredible information for us as it relates to water runoff from curb cuts. We obviously wanted to make sure there would be no disturbance in the operation of their business going forward, and how we could best facilitate that, and not just after it's built, but also during construction. But, you know, I can't say enough how great they've been to work with through this process. One thing to note, you know, with these types of ask on incentives, none of these are received by me until we deliver you guys 268 apartments. The tax abatement doesn't take effect until I deliver this project. I don't get a sales tax exemption on construction materials until I purchase and the materials are delivered to the site. We don't get a reimbursement for some of the tap fees or permit fees until I pay them. So this is not money that comes to us unless we deliver what we say we're going to deliver. We put in the presentation, I know you guys are all familiar with the site, just some other kind of renderings. We have, you know, our finish boards here, as you'll see, these will be very, very high quality, everything from the appliances to wood shaker-style cabinets, tile backsplashes, you know, just a very high-quality project that we think the lake deserves and the lake definitely needs. As you all know, there is a dire housing shortage here at the lake for quality housing. The project is not phased, we're doing it all at one time. We intend to start the project probably around November 1st. Total construction time is about two years, obviously, certain buildings will be delivered before then. But we, this is a rendering of the clubhouse as well, and you can kind of see the layout of all the amenities that would be offered. So that's what we have prepared for you guys tonight. Again, I know you guys have heard from us a couple of times, but we just wanted to be here to answer any questions that you guys may have that we haven't covered.
Very good. Comments or questions from the board? Alderman Schuman.
Okay, I have a quick question about the area that it's going to be in. So with it being down Nichols and right up against the school stuff, have you ever done a project this big on a two-lane, small road? Like, do you foresee that being a problem at all? Because that is a very high-traffic area, and we're talking about very large units. Do you foresee that being any kind of an issue?
At this point, we don't. You know, we, given its proximity to the interchange and the unlikely, you know, people not, you know, most of the people are not going to make left turns out of our development, they're going to make right turns to their places of employment. We are, you know, to help facilitate, if there's any elementary-school-age children living there, we are planning on building a sidewalk on our side of the street to connect our project to the school, you know, so hopefully that could potentially eliminate any potential additional traffic. But given its proximity to the highway, I think if you go through other cities, you'll see many times projects like this built close to interchanges to do just that, yeah. But we have had multiple discussions, again, with the Cars family to make sure that it wasn't disruptive to their business, and we've talked to them about the location of the entrance, of our curb cuts and entrances to our property.
Alderman Rose.
Thank you. I concur, Alderman Kelly. I lived, used to live down on Dude Ranch off of Nichols. I'm very, very familiar with Nichols, and as she said, the traffic is heavy. Then the school became a reality. My biggest concern, and believe me, I'm not against this project by any stretch, but my biggest concern is the location of the driveway, not closest to the expressway, but the one that's on the further down. And I'm trying to get, you know, perspective of that, because as people are coming down the hill, there's a curve, as you know, and it's blind. And that's why we've ended up with the police department even putting speed zones, of course, even with the school being there. But where they're coming down that hill, and it's on that curve, I don't know where that driveway is going to come out for people to come out, and I'm concerned of a problem, a big problem. And I'm not an engineer, and I know there's engineers that have looked at that, but that's my biggest concern.
No, I appreciate that. We did pay special consideration to the location of our clubhouse. That is, you know, the entrance to our development, which is the entrance closest to the highway. The second curb cut and entrance and exit is an auxiliary, and it's required for fire as well. And so the idea, the way we've set up the site plan is to get traffic to flow towards the clubhouse. It will definitely be more, most convenient, even if a resident lives further up in the development, it would be more convenient to funnel down through the clubhouse as well, most likely with the pickup of their mail, or they would be entering in that, if they're coming from the highway, we've designed the development to where it would facilitate them entering in the first entrance with the location of the clubhouse and the mail drop-off and things like that.
Okay, when you say the location of the clubhouse, it's hard for me to visualize. There's two, existing two homes now that I know will be demolished. There's a swimming pool that's right down by Nichols Road. So where will be the clubhouse?
Yeah, if you turn around on this TV screen, you can see it, it's shadowed out there where the writing is, and there's a point to the clubhouse. It's on the far-left side of the development.
And then, once you get the units built way over here on the right, and you're thinking that they'll, you want them to funnel down towards the clubhouse?
Yeah, and that's where we can strategically put like the mailbox stuff to get people to either enter or exit through that as well. You know, the clubhouse really becomes the center of the development.
Okay, but once again, where does that driveway, the opening of that driveway that's up there, is it after?
Putter. Putter. Is it Putter?
I mean, it has to be after Putter Road, isn't it?
Yeah, it is.
I mean, it's...
Yep.
We don't have an aerial photo, but I'd be able to show you exactly what has that on the back as of today, but...
Yeah, I don't know if that one really shows it there.
Is it, is it there where that curb cut is, just below Putter, the highway side of Putter?
You where the curb, where the first curb cut is?
As you're coming down the hill from the elementary school.
Way before this curve.
No. They've kind of got, they used to have a chain across the, is that where it's at, Jody?
You can...
It's the edge of the property.
I don't know where it is up on the hill.
Have to look at the...
Have I got a pointer?
I think I know where he's talking.
So if I'm heading to the school, then it's after Putter Road where your driveway's going to be, on the left.
It's on the far end of our property there. The furthest end, the furthest we could push it.
Okay.
There's a, there's a very aggressive grade change right there, too, that makes it prohibitive for us to move it any further closer to the highway as well. Obviously, again, with the fire circulation that we needed, you know, we had to put one somewhere, and we put it on the far, the farthest end.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Alderman Becker.
Maybe this is a better question for the city staff. Will this prompt us to do anything with Nichols Road? Because I'm with Phyllis, again, I'm not against the project, but it's a narrow road, it's a windy road, it's a hilly road, it's relatively busy. What are the city's thoughts in the future, I guess? And I know Kevin's not here, but...
I know, I wish even Kerry Patterson was here, he'd probably answer that. But like any growth in an area, as traffic counts change, and as we test those traffic counts, they could possibly put roads in different categories that need wider or shoulder. And so the short answer is yes, definitely, this adds traffic to the road, but at what point, I don't have those traffic numbers for that particular road, but the shorter answer is yes, it very much could at some point in the future change the needs or priorities of improvements or upgrades.
From what I understand, it's a complicated area, because the Cars property is so close to the road.
Right.
It's going to make it extremely expensive as well.
Right.
So I guess those are my concerns.
Yes. It definitely will, because again, anytime you expand an area, that changes the dynamics of whatever, whether it's traffic counts or, and again, I wish Kerry Patterson or even Kevin was here. or even Kevin was here, but it'll have to be paid attention to or addressed at some time, yeah.
Anyone else? Anyone?
The police chief has shown enough as technical expertise.
Is there anybody else that would like to comment?
Mm-hmm.
That's what, that's what we're talking about. At this point. Yep, please come on up. Please, microphone, please.
I'm Jody Hamner, and I'm one of the Cars kids. And I just want to say we're excited about this project. And at one time, I know that my family offered an easement to the city so that they could widen the road below there, and they never jumped on that. And I think, I think it'll be just fine. I think if, is it by Putter Road?
It's just that, that entrance that you guys have for the curb cut where the chain used to go across, and we, where we put the radar trailer as you're coming down the hill from the school.
Yeah, I mean, I know the road is narrow and windy, and when big boats go down that road, it's scary. And the buses do go across the line when they come out of the school, but I'm all for it, and my brothers are too. And my mom and dad would be happy.
Any other comments? All right, public hearing is closed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Notice how I did that?
Yes.
All right, next we're going to move on to Bill 22-74, an ordinance of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, designating certain tracts of land in the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, as a blighted area approving the development plan for the preserve at Sycamore Creek, approving a development agreement in connection with the development plan, and authorizing the city to enter into a development agreement and take certain other actions in connection therewith. City attorney.
Thank you, Mayor.
Ed Rucker, please.
We have two ordinances on tonight for your consideration. They're both on for first reading. Bill 22-74 authorizes what we call Chapter 353 Development Aid. Bill 22-71 authorizes the Chapter 100 Development Aid. I'm not guilty for misnumbering these, that was my favorite city clerk. I probably turned them in in the wrong order, and it's my fault, but, sorry for the numbers confusion. Mr. Spikerman, our lawyer, will be here at our official public hearing from Gilmore Bell on the 6th of October. I asked him to attend the official public hearing as opposed to tonight for the informal one. I understand Mr. Tagatoff will be returning on the 6th as well, this is very important to his company. So tonight, we're simply asking a first reading approval of this. I forwarded to the board this afternoon a memo from Mark, basically outlining a 50,000 foot bird's eye view of the project. If any of you have any additional questions, either tonight or in the ensuing couple of weeks, please make sure I get them. You can call me or send me an email, and I will, we will get answers, and I will make sure that Gina and Mark and I are all on the same page and understand each other's answers, and we will get answers out to you all before the next meeting. To keep on the development schedule, which is very aggressive, we're asking first reading approval tonight on both of these ordinances, and then we hope to have second reading approval in the first meeting in October.
Thank you very much. Comments or questions from the board? Alderman Rucker.
I don't know how many of the board members took time to be able to read most of this, a lot of reading, but I did peruse some of it, I did not read it all, but I went to the areas that I had my expertise in, found a few little errors, got with Mark Spike, I always miss his last name.
Spikerman.
Spikerman. Visited with him at the MML conference, and brought some things to his attention that was some mistakes, nothing critical, it was having to do with taxing districts and who and what and where, but anyway, those have been corrected. And matter of fact, Mark fixed them right there while we were standing there, so those have been corrected, so, and I think it's a great project. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman Becker.
So what exactly are we bonding, and how much?
I will get you that answer from Mark, okay? He and I did discuss this, this afternoon, okay? We're not issuing public bonds, okay, that the city's general fund will be liable for. But aside from that, this is the first 353 or 100 project the city's done, and I don't want to give you the wrong information, so we will, I will get you the answer. And we will, I will, he's aware of this question, because I've talked to him two or three times today on the phone, and that's one of the answers we're working on specifically for you. But there will not, while there may be a instrument issued by the city, there will, nothing will impact the city's general fund, and as Mr. Tagatoff says, he has to perform before he gets any of these benefits anyway.
Are we legally or morally liable?
No.
For anything?
Okay.
That's it?
Any other comments or questions? Alderman Ross.
Yeah, I just have one thing that I have a little concern with, and that is on page 63 of the packet. It's actually, I won't say page eight, because there's way too many documents in this thing, but it's on page 63 of the packet, it's under section 4.3, and it's item D as in David. And this is about the developer using commercially reasonable efforts to maximize purchases of construction materials within the city, okay? I understand that there's nothing in here that requires them to purchase within the city. And while I understand that, you know, margins are of the utmost importance to get housing, and I definitely support this project, okay? I would like to see a couple, some accountability around this. So for example, if in fact you all can find construction materials that are 10 or 20% higher or cheaper, then you can acquire them here, so be it, I get that. Our people should be able to compete. But either one, you should be able to, you should be required to demonstrate that, and/or two, that they be an amount that is significant, okay? So for example, and I'm not here to negotiate tonight, and I'm not certain that I want to approve this, but given the fact that we can hopefully negotiate this between the now and the next meeting to some level of reasonable comfort on both sides, I would like to see this amended to where there's a better opportunity for something within 5 or 10% of that being required either in the city or at least the counties of Miller and Camden, so that our folks have an opportunity to compete with these folks other than just the one, one cent, for lack of a better term, or $1. I don't know that anyone wants to address that right now, but I guess I would say I do not want to hold this project up, but if that cannot be rectified in some reasonable way between now and the next time, I may be voting against it, and I don't even want to vote against this.
Please talk up to the microphone.
It's up to him.
We have talked to Thomas Construction about this, and they will be obviously putting out requests for bids to local, not just for materials, but also for labor, and hosting kind of like open houses for local labor and local providers, once we get that. So Thomas will run point on that as the general contractor, but they've already discussed with us that they do have a plan to try to encourage as much local participation on materials as well as, as labor, similar to how they would work on, on all their local projects.
Well, and I appreciate that, I'm glad you're using Thomas Construction, I'm sure they'll use local labor or somewhere close to local labor. I just hope that contractually from the verbiage in this document that we're all going to approve eventually, hopefully, that we can button that up a little bit closer so that there's some accountability there, if you don't mind. All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Any other comments or questions? CNN, do I have a motion to approve first reading? Alderman Rucker, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Ross, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Next, we have Bill 22-71, an ordinance of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, an ordinance authorizing the city of Osage Beach, Missouri to issue its taxable industrial revenue bonds that preserve at Sycamore Creek, Series 2022, in a principal amount not to exceed $63 million for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of acquiring, constructing, and improving a facility for an industrial development project in the city, approving a plan for the project, and authorizing the city to enter into certain agreements and take certain other actions in connection therewith. This is the first reading. Again, city attorney, Ed Rucker, please.
Same project, same request, and Alderman Becker, we will get to a specific answer from Mr. Spikerman, in conjunction with Mr. Tagatoff and his attorneys here today, too, so we'll be able to get you a detailed answer to be certain exactly you know exactly what you're voting on.
All right. Alderman Becker.
I appreciate that, but unfortunately, I can't vote for this tonight without knowing that information.
All right, any other comments or questions from the board? Do I have a motion to approve first reading?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Rucker, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Alderman Rose, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
All right, motion carries. Next, we have Bill 22-65, an ordinance of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, enacting new sections 112.010 through 112.040, dealing with the Lake Ozark, Osage Beach Joint Sewer Treatment Plant and Joint Sewer Board, and ratifying all prior actions taken by the city representatives to the Joint Sewer Board. This is the first reading. Again, looks like city attorney Ed Rucker.
He's going to pass it. Not my fault.
Oh, wait, next four, Alderman Rucker, here we go.
I created the agenda items for Alderman Rucker.
Alderman Rucker, please.
His. Okay, as you'll see, we have many of these to go through, and each one is a little bit unique to it, and I know we've been here a while, but we'll try to bring to your attention where, where each ordinance and what it does. First of all, on this one here, I want to say thanks to Ed and Gina for their assistance that they provided in pulling this together. This was kind of a unique situation, as, and this is actually what started me on this mission completely, because I started to do some research on our ordinance for appointing people to the Joint Sewer Board, and I found nothing. We do not have an ordinance that lays out how to do that. So therefore, I started going backwards into my research and, and reaching out to both Gina and Ed, and found that we have a joint sewer construction agreement from March 7th, 1984. That's when this all started. We also had bylaws that were created for that organization in January 19th, 1987, and amended in 91, 93, 94, 95. There was also some state statute that provides for the Joint Sewer Government Board or Government System. So with all of that, and, and in trying to pull it all together, those were all kind of reached out to and looked at, and starting to pull together to create this document here, to follow some kind of a format of who and where and what and everything. There has, this is kind of suggesting or requesting somewhat of a change in the way we used to do it, or way we're doing it now, I should say. The way we've been doing it is there is the mayor who's, is automatically on it, and there's a city administrator who's automatically on it by virtue of their jobs or positions, and then the mayor appoints two other people. One of those has been the, an alderman, and then the other one has been, I don't know if they've actually really been appointed officially at a meeting here, but there's kind of been a public works director person that was kind of there. I've cleaned that up, and I've, after reading the bylaws of the organization, and have made it to where it's a mayor and the public works director, that are the people that are automatically on it, because it says, the person that's, basically the wording in the bylaws says a person is mainly responsible for the overseeing of the sewer system in your town. And I felt that was more that person. I hope, and I hope and strongly suggest that the mayor, moving forward, will have the city administrator as that other staff member appointee, but that's up to the mayor to make that decision, and up to us to concur it. But hopefully, and hopefully, I don't think we'll have to do any twisting arm there, because our city administrator is very active in that group and is very knowledgeable in it. So that's kind of the short of it, and if, we've tried to, with the help of Ed and back, and going back forth to do the things we needed to in each of these ordinances, talking about how many people are supposed to be on the committee, what the responsibilities are, the appointments, the vacancies, how to fill them, the purpose, when that should be filled, because that's some of the things that we're missing, and in basically all of them, there was different pieces. Different ordinances would have different pieces of it, so I tried to fill that going all the way forward, so. And this one here was actually the first one I did, and then threw that one away, and then started cutting and pasting from some of the other ones that said it better. So that's the short of it, and be happy to answer any questions if there is any.
All right, thank you. Comments or questions from the board? Alderman Ross.
So Kevin, the one thing I'm trying to figure out is these four people, okay? We don't currently have four people on there, do we?
Yes.
So is Gary Hamner the fourth?
No, 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 okay. Let's clear that up right here. That's been something that has been a misunderstanding for probably a lot of people for a long time. There are eight people on the joint sewer, or there are nine people on the joint sewer board, okay? There's four representatives from the city of Osage Beach. Those four representatives from the city of Osage Beach will be, if this ordinance is passed, will be the mayor because of his position, it will be the public works, I probably get his.
Manager.
Public Works manager because of his position, and then two people will be appointed. One will be a staff member, and one will be an alderman. Those are the four people, hold on, those are the four people that represent the city of Osage Beach. Flip side, the Lake Ozark has got basically the same thing. Now, where Gary Hamner comes in is, and part of this has been just some things that have probably been maybe even printed wrong on our side. Gary Hamner does not represent the city of Osage Beach. He represents sewer, joint sewer board, joint sewer area completely. He is a citizen at large that represents everybody. He's not our representative, he's the whole area representative. So whenever Gary's, Gary leaves that position, the next person to fill that could be somebody that is in, that lives in Lake Ozark.
And that's fine. I guess what I'm trying to be confused about is, is I thought the only, and it's been a while since I've been on the board, but as I remember, it was the mayor, it was the city administrator.
Public Works and an alderman.
Oh, was public, was Nick there then at that time?
Yes.
Okay, maybe I missed that part. Okay, now it makes sense, I apologize, thank you.
That's all right, don't.
All right, any other comments or questions from the board? CNN, do I have a motion to approve first reading?
Some of.
Alderman Rose, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Becker, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Next, we have Bill 22-66, an ordinance of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, setting out the terms of the building, something, let me turn the page here.
Building Code Board of Appeals.
Board of Appeals. Building Code Board of Appeals as used by the city pursuant to the uniform building codes previously adopted by the city. This is the first reading, again, Alderman Rucker, please.
Okay, again, in this situation here, I want to thank Ron White for assisting me on this, as well as Ed assisting me on all of them, but this was another unique situation. Just to give you a little background, this, this group of people, I don't know that they've ever even met. Have they, Ron?
No, well, I haven't.
Huh?
No, sir, not while I'm here.
And that's good, but what this group of people do is, as you read this ordinance and you read the purposes, they're there in case somebody questions something that Ron's office has decided that this is what the codes and ordinances say, okay? So in doing this review, basically, we don't have, we didn't have an ordinance as well. But what we did have is within the building codes that we have adopted by ordinance, and both the building codes and the residential codes, there's two areas of the codes, Section R 1112 and Section R 1113 in the building code, that say there needs to be a Board of Appeals. And that's really basically all it says. It says there's be, now it does say what they're supposed to do, and that's where I pulled out of those sections the purpose of that and some of the wording here. So I'm not taking credit for some of the wording, this was stolen from the, from what the, what the code says. So, but then what I added to that was, okay, there's, this is how many members there's got to be, and these are, this is not new, we, this is what we've had, this is the amount of members we've had, this is, this is how it's all been, it's just that that group has never had to get together. And we just kind of, I just kind of formalized it into some kind of written form again, when there's supposed to be, all the things are supposed to happen. So that's basically what we have with that. And this one was a floor sample that was brought forth tonight, different, and the difference was a couple clerical things, but the main difference- difference was a couple clerical things, but the main difference was, is the fact that in Ron's group, as well as what we already did with Board of Adjustments, there's five people that are on that Board of Appeals. There's people that are alternates. What we did in here is we made it this one to where the mayor or, in this situation, the building official can appoint somebody to fill in, because what we wanted is, what we didn't want is, we didn't want at 4:30 in the afternoon, all of a sudden, when this board's supposed to meet, and all of a sudden, somebody says, you know, I've got to disqualify myself because I know, or I've got a piece of that company, and I can't serve, and somebody else comes in sick. Well, this gives, if the mayor's not here, gives Ron the capability to reach out to go to alternates so that we can have a meeting, because we have to have at least four people there. It has to be at least, there has to be at least four votes, otherwise this appeal doesn't work. And there should, and we want five, so that's something that we added as a floor sample, because we kind of, we found the way of doing that with the Board of Adjustments, and then we didn't get it fixed over here on this one here. That's why there's a floor sample, to bring that into this ordinance. So, other than that, I think that basically we've got it, and again, happy to answer any questions.
All right. Board have any comments or questions? Alderman Becker.
Point of clarification, sir. Are we voting on the floor substitute?
Okay. Any other? Alderman Ross.
So I just have one, and it's going to carry through on a couple of the other boards too. And Kevin, by the way, great work. But as far as the members, I would like to see it delineated that the members are either citizens or business owners in the city of Osage Beach.
Well, um-
Unless there's statute that brings that.
Yes. I, there, what I did with this is, is there is some of these that, and I can't remember which ones is which, pardon that, because there's, man, there's some that due to state statutes and state statutes that require, or spell out, that they have to be a member of the city, okay? There's some that do, and there's others that don't, okay? And those that don't was, and where we haven't, I left it that way. I didn't change any of those, that area. So if it spells out that they have to be a member of the city, it should be because it's required by statute. If it doesn't say that, then I don't believe the statute, the statute is open, and that is at our discretion. I think that's a reasonably correct statement. Ed?
And the key to that, Alderman Ross, is of course, the board always has to approve who these members are.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? But for instance, in this one, if you look at 502-70, the Board of Appeals shall have five members and two alternates who are qualified by experience and training to pass on matters pertaining to building construction. Well, that significantly narrows our pool of possibilities in terms of people who could serve. Because that's narrowing the pool, it is certainly within the board's prerogative to say, as a response to a nominee, well, do we have anybody from Osage Beach that's willing to serve? But if you put that in the ordinance, here's my concern, if you put that in the ordinance, they have to be residents of the city, okay? And we don't have a resident of the city willing and qualified by experience and training to serve, okay? Then the structure itself fails. In other words, we don't have a Building Code Board of Appeals, because we've got a requirement that be city people, and we also have the state requirement that they be qualified by experience and training. So Alderman Rucker's right that he's pursued this in terms of where we can restrict it, we have, but if we do not have sufficient people who live within the city to fill out the board, then the process fails, period. And there is some right on the path of the contractor who may disagree with the building official, who say, I want to go to the Building Code Board of Appeals, and we've got an obligation to provide them that. I think it's more a political question. I would urge you not to try to solve it with legal draftsmanship here, because I'm afraid of tying the city's hands somewhere 10 years down the road where there's not a qualified person available, and, you know, all of a sudden, we don't have the relief. And in the law, the problem with this is, a right is only as good as the remedy it has, so we provided in the building code for the right to appeal a building official's decision. We have to have the remedy, and that's this process.
Any other comments or questions?
Legal mumbo jumbo for you?
No, no, no.
All right. Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve first reading? Alderman Becker, second. Alderman Schuman. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Next, we have 22-67, Ordinance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, Amending Chapter 600 Concerning Terms of the Liquor Control Board. First reading, Alderman Rucker, please.
On this one, I want to reach out to Todd and Tara for their assistance and helping. As you'll notice, after Ed and I did these, then I found staffers that I could send it to and say, help, you guys are the ones that are in the ditches here, read through this and see what you can, guidance you can give. Again, this one was an ordinance that was in place. It was just not formatted, as far as I felt, very well, and kind of didn't flow, and so that's, was a lot of the cleanup on this one here that was done. And there was a couple of things that were eliminated, that didn't follow through, that was scratched out in our existing ordinance, and was just a duplicate of sentences, which was cleaned up. But other than that, again, it's just making it flow with what we do and how we do it. And in this situation, kind of to readdress what's something you asked Richard about, if they're in the city or out, they're going to, they're going to be following P&amp;Z and some of the other, the only ones that really are not, were spelled out that they're within the city is a Board of Appeals is one. Most of the others, I think, do kind of indicate that they're members of the city, and I'll have to go back for it for sure, but anyway, that's what there is with the Liquor Control Board.
All right.
If that one was a floor substitute also, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Comments or questions from the board? Seeing, yes, Alderman Becker.
So just curious, how is good moral character determined?
I think I would defer that question to either gentleman there or that gentleman there. I just took the words that were in the ordinance already.
Basically, no serious felony convictions, arrest. You know, we haven't, they haven't sold the minors over and over again, that type of stuff.
Should we do a search on every applicant?
Yes.
All right. Any other comments or questions?
My desk first.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve first reading?
So moved.
Alderman Meroe, Alderman Ross, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Next, we have Bill 22-68, An Ordinance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, Concerning the Tax Increment Financing Commission, Amending Section 135.120 for the terms of members of the commission in Section 135.140, Organization, the commission in Section 135.160, Conduct of Meetings. This is the first reading. Alderman Rucker, please.
Ditto from what I've been telling you earlier, nothing other than kind of reformatting and making it flow and just changing things to make sure we cover all our bases.
Okay. Comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve first reading? Alderman Ross, do I have a second? Alderman Osteen, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Bill 22-69, An Ordinance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, Amending Sections 111.020, 111.040, and 111.050 of the Osage Beach Municipal Code, Concerning the Purposes, Terms, and Meetings of the Citizens Advisory Committee. This is the first reading. Alderman Rucker.
Again, just reformatting, there was, I think, the one thing we did, the one thing that was done in all of them, I guess I should have mentioned, and as this was the first one, is we made it very clear that the positions were to be filled in the month of May, and we made it very clear that they need to be filled by the 1st of June, so there's no if, ands, or buts, or questions as to when and how long a term, et cetera, is. And this was the one, and again, I reach out, I reach out to Tara and her assistance with this, and what assistance she could give me, and I thank her for that. That's it.
All right. Comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, motion to approve first reading?
So moved.
Alderman Becker, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Meroe, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Bill 22-70, An Ordinance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, Amending Sections 400.020, Membership 400.030, Officers 400.110, Subdivision Requirements Concerning the Planning Commission, Increasing Two New Sections 400.035, Conductive Meetings, and 400.045, Zoning Officer. First reading, Alderman Rucker, please.
This is basically planning and zoning, and one of the things that is unique about planning and zoning is that there's really not a lot of things we locally have that we can do to that ordinance, because it's pretty well mandated by state statutes. And that was the first thing we had to do, is go back to the state statutes and follow that. And the areas that we did have a little more say-so on was the fact of filling the positions and when and date-wise and such like that. And again, just tried to put it into a format. So that's basically what was done here with the P&amp;Z.
Comments or questions from the board? Do I have a motion to approve first reading? Alderman Ross, do I have a second? Alderman Schuman, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion approved. Next, we have Bill 22-72, An Ordinance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, Repealing Section 405.680 Concerning the Board of Adjustment Within the Zoning Code, and Enacting in its Place Four New Sections 405.680, 405.681, 405.682, 405.683, Concerning the Board of Adjustment Within the Zoning Code. This is the first reading. Alderman Rucker.
This one was quite a challenge, because if you look at the original ordinance, it's just one big old paragraph, and it was very challenging to basically put some formatting to that and some structure to it. Just share with you, these two pages, if you notice, the red is the new, and who knows, that might have been version four, five, or six between Ed and myself. But again, we just tried to get it worded correctly, tried to get it to where it flowed, and tried to get the right information in there, and got the assistance with that one from Kerry Patterson, who works very closely with that, obviously. So, other than that, any other questions that we tried to answer?
Comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve first reading? Alderman Becker, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Meroe, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next one's not mine.
That's right. All right. Bill 22-73, An Ordinance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, Authorizing the Expenditure of Funds for the Oaks Lodge 2517 Veterans Parade Event Support Request, An Amount Not to Exceed $2,000. This is the first reading. City Administrator Gina Woods, please.
Yes, may I members of the board? So part of our community event support fund that we have, there's $13,000 budgeted, attached, and I apologize, I now have attached their application and budget details. I neglected that the first round. But the Oaks Lodge, again, this year for the Veterans Day Parade that will be held November 5th, is requesting $2,000 for event support. We have supported this in the past. We have not expended all of our event support funds, as there have been three requested and approved so far this year. And I believe if you have any questions, Mr. Ron Schmidt is here that I'm sure he could answer for you, right? No?
All right. Do I have any comments or questions from the board? Alderman Schuman.
My only comment is, I do love the Veterans Day Parade. We go to it every year. My husband participates in it. My kids love it. It is a great event to be able to do right on the parkway, so I fully support this.
All right. Anyone else? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve first reading? Alderman Schuman, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Osteen, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Next, we have Resolution 22-06, A Resolution of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, Supporting the Application for the Department of Transportation Reconnecting Communities Pilot, RCP, Discretionary Grant Program for Osage Beach Reconnecting Communities Planning Project. City Administrator Gina Woods, please.
Yes, I'm actually going to comment and refer to the next two items on the agenda. The first one is a resolution, and as I'd put in my comments, part of the President's bipartisan infrastructure bill, there is a reconnecting communities grant that can be provided for technical assistance, hands-on planning, et cetera. I know you guys read my comments. It is, like many of the new ARPA and funds, it is one-of-a-kind program. So we have been approached by the Trails Initiative, and the Ozark Trails Initiative, and the Community Foundation, in conjunction with Council of Local Governments, to actually be the contract to apply for this said planning grant. That is pretty massive. I know, hopefully, they got short comments, but I know that they're going to explain in detail, but I wanted to give you why I've got two. So part of the grant program is, it needs to be sponsored, in this case, it'll be cosponsored or sub-applicant with the Trails for the city, because we're a government. The intention is to share in the cost of, the cost for local government, the Council of Local Governments to be the applicant, and then also, as I know he'll bring up, is share in the funds. Should we be awarded the project, share with the sub-applicant the cost. Now, this grant is, money's got to be expended if you're awarded by 2025, and we expect that we would get an answer by 2023, based on the website. So the first resolution is, do you support this idea? Do you support us being an applicant and with them as a sub-applicant? And if you do, then I followed that up with actually an agreement for our share with the Council of Local Governments. I will let Brian explain the actual details of the project and the expected match.
Thank you. Everybody that does not know who I am, I'll introduce myself. I'm Brian Yanson, the Executive Director at Lake of the Ozarks Council of Local Governments. It's a long name. I don't know, many of you maybe know about who we are and what we do. Kind of, I'm going to get into this a little bit. I'm going to turn it over. I don't know how much you know Stacy Pertler or not in the Magic Dragon Trail, depending on who knows everybody, but like Gina said, we came in, we talked to the mayor, we talked to Gina about this, as well as meeting with Stacy, talked about this grant opportunity. So part of what we do at the Council of Local Governments is, we look at grant opportunities. Kind of this new one came out, like Gina said, this is a brand-new grant. It's a pilot program grant, Reconnecting Communities Pilot Grant Program. It came out through the bill process here, the bipartisan infrastructure bill, our law that was developed. It's got funding in it for construction as well as planning project. So I think this is a unique opportunity for the city of Osage Beach to work together with Magic Dragon Trails to provide a new vision for the future of the city, and bring in pedestrian bicycle traffic again that you do not have. With the council, we are constantly working with MoDOT, where you're a partner down here in the four counties. We coordinate issues with MoDOT and present projects. So working with Gina, you have eight bridges in your cities that nobody can cross from a pedestrian point of view. So when we start to look at grants like this, this is one of those grants that hand and glove work very well with the Magic Dragon Trail and a network of systems that could integrate the entire process together here at your city. Your city's been divided up. If you read through this, and if you guys have the packet in front of you, probably read it already, but basically, it is to reconnect communities by removing retrofitting and mitigating transportation facilities. Big picture here. They built the highway through here and divided up the city in a bunch of little segments. The lake did part of that, but the bridges did a lot of it from a pedestrian point of view. So through a program like this, and you can see down on the first page here, a variety of transformative solutions that knit the community back together, which is pedestrian walkways, overpasses, road redesign, and complete street conversions. When you really flip through this grant, there's a couple different things in here, and I'm going to go quick, because I know there's a ballgame tonight. So, and it's three to nothing, we're losing by three. So besides that, the planning grant, it goes in two different types. It's either a planning grant or a construction meeting. They'll give you money for planning, and then they will fund the construction to build the projects that you had planned. So the first step of all these grants, and this is very similar to a lot of big other U.S. Department of Transportation grants, that they like to fund projects and give money to, and then they like you to go do all the planning work and come back to them and ask for millions and millions of dollars to build what they gave you money to plan. So in this particular case, oh, sorry, I could flip on that. I could have done that. So I'm reading through this and not looking up there at the TV. So it's Slide 3, the application process. process. Kind of skip around and get, get, get going quick for you guys. But, uh, we provided, uh, 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 signed, basically, an agreement put in place to write this grant on behalf of you. I'm going to go through, the biggest point of this thing is, today is September the fifteenth, and this grant is due in twenty-eight days. So, twenty-eight days that my staff will put this together. If you guys approve this tonight, we have to get going on it, it is ASAP. We need a full amount of time to get this thing done. So, when you really get down to it, the, what Gina said was, a unit of government, you guys, the city, is the applicant. You will be the main applicant on this document, we will write it on your behalf, and the Magic Dragon Trail will be your sub-applicant on the application. So, really, when it gets down to it, it's doing the entire planning network here, um, for the system we just talked about. Um, the next page on here talks about, really where we're requesting is a one point five million dollars to go after planning. So, that will develop a network of all your street systems, all your sidewalks, all your bridge problems that you have now, working with MoDOT, engineers, traffic feasibility studies, getting everything done, the roadway diet that the master plan for Magic Dragon Trail proposed, again, giving it alternates, getting public input, gathering up public input, collecting data, and then hiring all the engineers and planning and architects and landscape architect, whoever you can get, to do the documents to figure out what the solution is for this. I'm not developing a solution, we're asking money to find the solution for it. So, when we're asking for one point five million dollars from the planning grant, that if USDA, US DOT awards this document to us, we're able to hire the technical expertise in order to finish this and tie the whole thing together. Again, working with the city, the Magic Dragon Trail, if we're involved, we're involved, but somebody has to oversee the administration of this grant, so that has to be decided. But again, you don't have to decide that till next year if it's awarded. Takes about nine months usually to award this grant. We wrote one for a RACE grant, we did not get it, though. Um, so I'm throwing that out there, that was for another project. But, for the most part, this is a brand-new one. Um, if you go towards a planning grant like this, you're more than likely to receive construction dollars if you go back to this next year. This is brand-new through bill, so this is the much money as the government has right now. Everybody knows that, everybody knows there's ARPA money and money out there. Um, so this is an opportunity for the City of Osage Beach to go after that. The next page here talks about excess and mobility barriers. I believe that the city has a good plan moving forward, that this grant, likelihood, as the story would be told here, that we have to do in the next twenty-eight days is develop a story of why the city needs to be tied back together. We all know it, I drove down Grand Glaze Bridge eleven, ten thirty, eleven o'clock the other night, and there was a woman and a man walking on a sidewalk with a dog out in the middle of the street, on the highway, and I passed him at sixty-five, and it was dark, and I barely saw him and got out of the way. That tells you a story right there that needs to be in here, that all these bridges are very dangerous. Um, part of this is, where there, your regional people working with MoDOT, that MoDOT is unwilling to let you build on top of the bridges, build along the side of the bridges. Again, walking through each one of them, the KK Bridge, maybe we walk through a design on that, to where we do put a bike lane and pedestrian lane on there. But, for the most part, you guys got eight of them, you got one big massive one that segments your city in two pieces, for sure, which is the Grand Glaze Bridge. MoDOT will not let you put a pedestrian bridge, attach it to that, so you're going to have to build a separate bridge. This is the, the grant that can help you build that. So, again, tying, tying your entire city back together, which I feel, I've been looking at this, I talked to Mike once before about another grant, that this one is the one that really fits your thing. It talks about building a highway, is a highway is a system that has divided your, your city up into pieces. So, in order to put this back together and put your city back together from a pedestrian and bicycle point of view, and also interact with the Magic Dragon Trail and all those pieces, and tie it all into one, this is why this grant's needed. Um, like Gina said, there's one point five million dollars is our ask right now. If that evolves over the next twenty-eight days and goes down, then your match side will be there. But, your match for one point five million dollars would be twenty percent, which is three hundred thousand dollars. So, you're looking at, between Magic Dragon Trail and you guys, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar split, if it's at one point five million dollars. If we revise that and get numbers with engineers and stuff in the next twenty-eight days to show that one point five's a little too high of an ask, I'd rather get more for you guys, because the amount of studies and information that we need to gather up for the entire city of all the bridges, all the pedestrians, the roadway diet for Osage Beach Parkway, when it really comes down to it, you're going to need that. The other flip side in here, if you look at some of these next slides, if you want to flip, talks about you can do in-kind donations on this stuff. So, if we are awarded a grant, you could have your engineer, or you could have volunteers work on it for pieces and parts, and they can bring an in-kind contribution to this. So, even you guys could bring an in-kind to this, to bring that cost that your match side comes down. But, all in all, when you get down to this, Gina did say it's a reimbursement one, so that's why they want the, the government units of bodies to be involved, that it's a one point five million dollar revolving fund that you guys got to fund. Fund it out, and you get reimbursed in the rear on this. So, um, you got to be able to do that. So, I'm pointing that out. But, all in all, I think this is a really good grant for you guys. We're just the grant writer service, you know, I've been looking at this, I know your guys' area, I've been living here forever, moved here full-time now recently to take this job, but, uh, you know, over the next thirty days, we're going to, we're going to go really hard at creating this narrative and this story for you guys, and develop the diagrams, the exhibits. Um, you know, we're talking about the eight bridges of the key in the Osage Beach Parkway over there, but again, just basic sidewalks throughout your city, as well as tying in pieces of parts of the Magic Dragon Trail. So, you guys have this future vision of your city, that you're basically a pedestrian city that can, you can walk or bike anywhere throughout the city, and then expand that over time, and let the other cities join and connect to you. And I think that's something unique you could bring down to the lake that's not here now. So, all in all, if you guys have any questions, I'm not going to drone on to it, but it's just a quick ask of ten thousand dollars for a grant writing fee to tie it together with Stacy's team and you guys, and try to see if we can get some grant money that could really change the footprint of the city.
So, um, of that ten thousand dollars, and you can see in your packet, uh, the Magic Dragon Trails and Branches for the Lake have agreed to pay half of that, so your expense just to apply for this grant would be cut in half. You're only paying five thousand dollars to get a plan that could carry you into the future for a, you know, a long, long time. Uh, this isn't something that's going to happen immediately, obviously, getting all of this infrastructure built, um, especially when you're looking at, you know, maybe a fifty million dollar project, and it's reimbursable, um, that's something to consider. Uh, one of the things that I think is great in the story is, if you look on this side of the Grand Glaze Bridge, we've got the hospital and all the medical. On the other side of the bridge, we've got all the retail. For people that don't own a vehicle, and that is, you know, a fairly large percentage of our population, that need services, that's a very disconnect. There's a reason that Dollar General built a store at the end of Osage Beach Parkway, because their business model is to go to places where there is a food desert, and that's why they built a store there. Um, we really need to be able to give those people an opportunity to walk and get to fresh produce, to fresh, um, ingredients, meats, that type of thing. Um, that's not offered at Dollar General stores or Casey's. Um, you're also going to see a benefit health-wise with more walking availability and bicycling availability. Northwest Arkansas, they saw a hundred and thirty-seven million dollars a year in direct and indirect healthcare cost benefits. Um, so there's a lot of advantages to this. For five thousand dollars, because we're willing to go into this in a partnership with you, um, you know, you could be looking at a planning grant that sets the pace of the community growth in the future, and, um, it can fund up to a hundred million dollars per project. So, um, there's, and everybody knows, if you get the planning grant, you're highly likely to get the next step of the grant. So, if anybody has any questions.
Well, thank you both very much. I'm very much in favor of this. When we met a few weeks ago, I mean, it's like this grant was written for the City of Osage Beach, so thank you very much. Any other comments or questions from the board? Alderman Rucker.
Gina, uh, will, will the hiring of the grant writer be the local, Council of Local Governments, or will it be us?
So, first, so you're looking at the second item, and I'll answer this question. We wrote the agreement as the government agency, as the main applicant, to be the contract with. It's, it's actually a dual contract. There's a room for them to sign the, the trails or the branches of the lake, I'm sorry, whichever official legality. So, it's just saying, our part's five thousand, the contract with them is ten thousand, but both parties in there, it says share fifty-fifty. So, we will only write a check for five, but we are co-signing the contract for ten.
And I'm, I'm okay, my, I just want to make sure that if we, if we had to write the check for ten, and they gave us five, we need to make sure the ordinance so said that. But, okay, that's, that's, that's all my concern is.
Any other comments or questions? Alderman Rucker. Nope, Alderman Meroz. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I meant Ross.
I'm in, I'm in total favor of this. This is a big step in our future, and it's something that I think that we will all benefit eventually, that I think this is a heck of a way. We don't know if we're even going to be accepted, and it certainly is well worth the gamble to see if we can do it. Yeah, I mean, thank you for all your efforts.
Alderman Ross?
So, while I appreciate all the great thoughts and the large thinking in all of this, um, my, my struggle is this. Do we know that if, let's just say we got a fifty million dollar grant, for example, okay? Is it an eighty-twenty?
Uh, no, it's, well, it depends on what you get and when you get it, so.
So, let me ask a question, maybe, maybe I should ask the question this way. If we were to receive the planning grant, okay, do we have to go forward?
Oh, you could deny it, yeah.
Okay. And so, as we think about going down this path, I'm not against it by any means, but if there's an eighty-twenty share on a fifty million dollar grant, there's ten million dollars out there, folks, okay? We're not sitting on ten million dollars, all right? To, to put a bridge, another bridge across the Grand Glazes, which what I think you said, Brian, and, oh, by the way, I have terrible issues with the way MoDOT has handled their ability to let us work with their bridges, but that's a whole nother subject, all right? I'm convinced that it's probably in the neighborhood of ten to fifteen and possibly twenty million dollars, just for that one bridge, so people can walk, okay? That's, I, I find that a limited invest, or return on investment, let's just put it that way. So, I'm not convinced that I'm okay with going forward, other than the planning grant approval, but we were going to have to see where that takes us. And I'm very skeptical that I am interested in receiving a fifty million dollar grant with a twenty percent match.
And it's not, it's up to a hundred million dollars. So, that's this particular one. This is only going to be around for a couple of years, and it's gone. It's going to run out of money. Um, so that's where this applied, reapply next year. It's also good to, you can go after the other DOT grants that are out there, once you have the plan done, which there's different offsets and different matches for RACE and a couple other different ones that are out there. Big Department of Transportation grants. So, again, it depends on which one you want to go to, if you would get this, get the planning. You don't have to do a hundred million dollars of it, you know? You could do ten million dollars, and you could focus on this, this, and this. You can do five million, or a million, and you got to put a hundred thousand dollars in, it's a ten percent match or whatever.
And that's why I said, it's a, it's a project that will take several years, but you've got your plan and your map there to go forward, and that, at that point, depends on what grants you want to apply for and the matching on those.
But I, I think the dollars are out there in the near future, that this is only going to come around once in a lifetime. The dollars are there.
And that's fine. We, we've lived without these things for a long time. The only thing I will say is, is that as much as I appreciate all your efforts with the Magic Dragon Trails, and I hope that we can pull this thing together, I still have significant concerns about dropping down to three lanes between Nichols and KK. That hasn't necessarily, we haven't, I know there's a lot of work yet to be done, but that is a concern I have, and I'll leave it at that at this point. That's all I have.
All right, any other comments or questions? Alderman Rucker.
I want to reiterate total support, and it's my, and, and one, the other thing I think we need to look at is, this is no different than what we're doing with our parks. This is no different than what we've done. It's like, okay, what do we want? We're, we're on the planning stage, we're saying, let's, let's figure out what this whole big picture is. Once we get the whole big picture, we don't have to take a bite and eat the elephant all at once. You know, the old story goes, we take a bite at a time. So, if we can, if we, if we can only afford to do this bridge now, and this bridge, and, and it's a plan that it takes us twenty years, we've got to start, and the planning is a start. That's why, you know, this is extremely important, and, and from here, we just see how much we can take and what we can do from there forward, and if we don't start now, it'll never get done.
So, so these studies will also help you with the MoDOT ask, when we go and ask for eight bridges, if we have studies done that we've agreed, MoDOT, this is where we want, we have feasibility, we have engineering studies that prove that we can reduce a lane down and fit this on the bridge, or it proves that you can't, we just have too much traffic to do this, we need a standalone bridge, that's, that's this side of the table. But, if there's MoDOT situations going forward, it gives us proof, as well as dollar amounts to hand off to the unfunded needs list, instead of just going, we want all, eight bridges, and we want pedestrians on all the bridges, MoDOT, please make it happen. Well, you're five to ten years down the line. It's on the unfunded needs list that I'm presenting at the end of the month to MoDOT. You know, again, they haven't even done a study, and it's been on the list for a couple of years, Ron. So, again, they just haven't moved it along. They're slow, they have a lot of money to, to throw at this. So, I think having more studies done to be able to have and hand off to MoDOT, the more likely you're, you would get funded in MoDOT's world on some of these bridges as well. So, having planning dollars is good, but going for, again, going for the big bucks, if you had an opportunity to get a hundred and fifty million dollar project, how do you fund it? I guess you guys have to sit down and really think about that, but it's a, it would change the footprint of the city, that's for sure, so. Any other questions?
Any other comments or questions?
Nah, I'm going to go watch the football.
Well, we, we got.
I've got one quicker.
Alderman Osteen, please.
Uh, is there a statute of limitations on when these funds have to be utilized if we receive the grant? Because some of our grants have definitive timeframes, you must use the, this one.
This planning grant, and funds have to be obligated by twenty twenty-five if you're awarded. So, basically, we'll know about award in twenty twenty-three, they need to be obligated by twenty twenty-five.
Planning grants are shorter because the constructions are longer, because it'll take longer to build. So, planning grants typically want to do it. It, uh, grants always have a timeframe of, you need to start construction, or you need to finish by this point. So, this one's just like it. You have, you'll probably get awarded.
Twenty twenty-five, that's what.
Twenty twenty-three, you got to bet it in two years. Basically, it's.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Rucker.
Second.
Alderman Becker, second. Saw those in favor?
Aye.
All right, resolution.
Thank you, everybody.
Oh, we got one more.
Thank you, and Alderman Rucker.
We don't need comments.
Don't need you for this, I guess.
Alderman Rucker, just so you know, they did have an excavator out at the YMCA working on the disc golf course.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you both.
Thank you, guys.
All right, moving on, Bill twenty-two dash twenty-seven, Ordinance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, authorizing the City Administrator to execute an agreement with the Lake of the Ozarks Council of Local Governments for grant services and technical support for the Osage Beach Reconnecting Communities Planning Project Grant Application through the U.S. Department of Transportation Reconnecting Communities Pilot. Discretionary Grant Program for an Amount Not to Exceed Five Thousand Dollars, this is the first and second reading. Do I have any other comments or questions from the board? If not, do I have a motion to approve first reading?
Go move.
Alderman Becker. Alderman Osteen, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
First reading passes. Bill twenty-two dash seventy-seven, Ordinance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, authorizing the City Administrator to execute an agreement with the Lake of the Ozarks Council of Local Governments for grant services and technical support for the Osage Beach Reconnecting Community Planning Project Grant Application through the U.S. Department of Transportation Reconnecting Communities Pilot. Discretionary Grant Program for an Amount Not to Exceed Five Thousand Dollars, this is the second reading. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve second reading? Alderman Meroz, do I have a second?
Sure.
Ald, Alderman Osteen, roll call, please.
Alderman Schuman, yes. Alderman Ross.
Yes.
Alderman Osteen?
Yes.
Alderman Rose?
Yes.
Alderman Rucker?
Yes.
Alderman Becker?
Yes.
All right, second reading passes. Two more, folks. This is a motion to approve the purchase of police laptops and GIS equipment that was included in a Camden County ARPA grant that was recently awarded to the city for an amount not to exceed fifty thousand, one hundred nineteen dollars and twenty-eight cents. Assistant City Administrator, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Members of the Board. Over the summer, Chief Davis and Kevin Crooks and I worked together on a county ARPA grant. The county was, uh, recently awarded the grant to the city. None of the items we are requesting through the grant have been included in the twenty-two budget, and these items need to be, need board approval, and will require budget amendments before we can move forward. Uh, there are three main pieces to this grant. The first piece is the addition of eleven Panasonic ToughBooks. A budget amendment will be needed for this, and I believe it does follow this, uh, this item. Unfortunately, after the grant application was turned in, specific to these ToughBooks, there was a difference in cost, and so we did have to go back to the, to the county to get a little bit of an amendment on that. I did include an email in the documentation that shows that the, the county, um, uh, did approve that amendment. Uh, the, these purchases, uh, do not have any further impact on the budget, and simply replace older end-of-life ToughBooks, uh, and, and the purchase of these particular. ToughBooks and, and the purchase of these particular items is being made through a cooperative bid agreement that we have in place. The second item that we are asking for is additional GIS equipment. We already have one set of these that we, that we use. Being able to have that second set will provide us with better efficiencies in the field as we train some of our staff in all three departments, transportation, water, and sewer to assist our GIS locator in mapping out all of the utilities that we have throughout the city. As you know, we have recently, you know, began expanding our GIS capabilities and this just improves our efficiencies as we move forward with that. The second, the, the third piece of this is the purchase of two iPad Pro tablets that are to be used in concert with the GIS equipment. The tablets that they use right now are the tablets, the same tablets that we use for the work orders that we use out in the, out in the field and these tablets are just, you know, when, when you're trying to do this type of technical work, the tablets are just really inefficient. The new tablets can do uploads within seconds and will greatly improve the efficiency that we have for this. So, so that's basically the gist of the grant. I have detailed out where all this money will come from and I, and as I said before, Gina has a budget amendment in place that will be nixed after this. One other comment I do want to make, I have been contacted by the county and made aware that there are additional funds available through this grant that we will be able to take advantage of and so myself and Chief Davis and Kevin Crooks are working on a second grant application that we hope to have to you before the end of the year that will include additional GIS and police technology upgrades that we would have normally just put in our budget, but if we can get the grant money, then it's worth it for us to go ahead and, and try and go for that and get that going. So, I do recommend approval and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Very good, thank you. Comments or questions from the board? All right, seeing none to have a motion to approve? Alderman Schuman, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Ross, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. All right, last item of business. Bill 22-75, an ordinance to the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, amending ordinance number 21.78, adopting the 2022 annual operating budget, transfer of funds for necessary expenses for computer and GIS equipment. First reading. City Administrator.
Yes, thank you, Mayors and Board, members of the Board. So, I'm asking first and second, as Mike said, this corrects his, he's always messing with the budget, but I guess it's okay this time because it's all 100% funded. So, this corrects the revenue and the outgoing expense line items for what Mike just said.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none to have a motion to approve first reading?
Go move.
Alderman Rose, do I have a second? Alderman Becker, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, first reading passes. Second reading, Bill 22-75, an ordinance to the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, amending ordinance number 21.78, adopting the 2022 annual operating budget, transfer of funds for necessary expenses for computer and GIS equipment. Second reading. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none to have a motion for a second, to approve second reading? Alderman Rose, do I have a second? Alderman Osteen, roll call, please.
Alderman Ross.
Yes.
Alderman Osteen.
Yes.
Alderman Rose.
Yes.
Alderman Becker.
Yes.
Alderman Schuman.
Yes.
All right, second reading passes. All right, staff communication, the city administrator, Gina Woods.
The only thing I have is the educational session for TIF financing specifically to bonds. I'm really confused on what the consensus is or isn't.
There isn't.
And I, yeah, okay, well, I really wasn't going to lead with that. So, I, it does not matter to me, I just know to get it on the books and to get the scheduled with two options, which I think were clear. We can schedule various times on that Monday and Tuesday, the 26th, 27th, whether in person or by Zoom, no max more than three of you, whatever time works sense for you, kind of one-on-one or three-on-one with the, the expert, or we can shore this up as discussion on the first meeting in October. I have no, I have, just give me direction because I think after all that, normally, I'm pretty good about reading your emails and who's got majority and I, I just couldn't figure out this one. So, I just kindly ask that I get some direction on how you want me to.
Alderman Ross.
Did you say Ross? Okay, I'm sorry. But all I'll say is I don't care that we, whether we have separate meetings or not, but given the fact that Phyllis, given her eye surgery, can't attend either one of those separate meetings, then I, I don't know that we should consider that. She should have that opportunity.
Oh, I thought I got a follow-up email that you said you could do. Okay.
At a different date.
She can't do the Monday, Tuesday, but she could do the Thursday, Friday. I think, like Richard said, she just can't do the Monday, Tuesday, that week or the next week because she has eye surgery the following Monday, Tuesday.
It's kind of hard to do a Zoom meeting without.
Okay, well, I apologize, I thought I got another one. So, Monday, Tuesday, Tuesday, Wednesday, if you want to go that route or the sixth. I, yeah, I just need direction. I apologize, Phyllis, I thought I had got those dates.
Alderman Rucker.
I would like to see them individually rather than public meeting dice. I think there's a more relaxed atmosphere and that's just my opinion. When, again, like Richard said, we've got Phyllis that's got some surgery and we need to, you know, accommodate and work around that as best we can because it's not critical that we do it, you know, we can push it off a week. I mean, we just got to get it done though and, and that, that was my only thoughts is.
Alderman Osteen.
I agree with Kevin in that this is basically, the purpose of this was for more discussion and to gather more knowledge. I don't think that's something that should be part of a regularly scheduled board meeting as part of the agenda because to me, it's more like a brainstorming session to just get more knowledge about it, ask questions, et cetera. I don't think it needs to be part of the public forum. That's all.
Do you know any more now?
I do know more, I thank you. What I will do is go back to get a couple more days' options. That way, Phyllis, accommodate Phyllis and making sure I don't mess anybody's schedule. No problem, that was my, I overlooked that piece. So, I appreciate it. That's all I have.
All right. Assistant City Administrator, Mike Welty.
I do have one update and I'll, I'll try to be quick. As you know, earlier in the year, we, I've talked a couple of different times about the Tyler Technology ENCODE upgrades that we're going through this year. We had three separate upgrades. The first one was the, the ENCODE Cloud, which we, we got everything in the cloud, all taken care of, finalized that back in July. The second piece was the Tyler Content Manager upgrade, which, which gave us the ability to upload documents directly into the program and I'm happy to announce that that, as of about a week ago, is live and we are now moving on to the final piece of that, which is the upgrade to the business and a business license and building permits modules. So, as it stands right now, I fully expect that by the time we get to the end of October, all three of those modules will be live and complete and give us, you know, take us that much closer to being able to better interact with our customers and our constituents via the internet and move further in the direction of going paperless. So, I just wanted to update you guys on that. Thanks.
All right, thank you. City Clerk, Tara Baras.
I just have one thing or a couple of things. One, I want to thank Carrie Bell and Cindy Lee for giving me Abby Mulder for the weekend. She helped with the city clerk's office a lot with on Sunday, helping me get set up for our silent auction. She had a great time at MML. Without her helping me, it was good. We had the best city auction, city auction, live auction ever. We raised $3,200. That's the most we've ever done and we had a great time and thank God that Osage Beach is not a host next year. Being a host is tough. I am, I'm white, but thank you, that's it.
All right, thank you. City Treasurer, Carrie Bell.
Just real quick, a few months ago, the city approved of being a part of the Missouri.
Yeah.
People online can hear you. Thank you.
Thank you. Being a member of the Missouri Securities Investment Pool and over the last two weeks, I, all of the software's been set up and we are transferring funds and taking advantage of some better interest rates for the city. Hopefully, you'll see maybe a, some improvement in the revenue streams by budget time and, and Tara has to help me every day with that, too. It's a two, two-party process. That's it.
All right, thank you very much. City Attorney, Ed Rucker.
Just two, two things. First is congratulations to Carrie Bell, who this week received the Outstanding Government Finance Officer Award from the Missouri Government Finance Officers Association that was awarded at the MML convention. So, you've done great and we're proud of you. Second, just so we're clear to, to all the folks at home and out there in radio land, the, the, the TIF discussion that Gina and the board engaged in will not result in any policies. This is simply a matter of training and answering questions to our elected officials. Any policies that come up will be published and adopted in a public meeting so that this is only specific training at the board's convenience. I don't want anybody to think that they're going to be making any policy decisions in this process. That's all I got.
All right, Police Chief, Police Davis.
Just remember, this week is Bike Fest. Talking to them today, there's already a bigger crowd than what they anticipated, so that's a good thing, but just, you know, there's a lot of motorcycles out there, so be careful. We got one new face in, on the police department side, Nora Lee Chamberlain, our new records and evidence custodian. She started on Tuesday last week. Yeah, Tuesday last week. She came back for two full weeks so far. So, no, she's doing a great job, she's catching on real quick and we did hire an analyst who's going to be starting the middle of October, so when he gets moved here from Hawaii. And his name's Cameron Noidlaw. So, wanting to move back closer to family, his wife's family's got, I think they're up in Wisconsin or somewhere north, but gets him back closer, so.
Did you want to go from Hawaii to Wisconsin?
I, I don't know.
Very good. Building Official, Ron White.
Yes, just a few things. One, I'd like to thank the board for allowing me to go to MML this year. It was my first time and I had a great experience there, got to meet a lot of people who I otherwise wouldn't have. Several of the clerks made comment about knowing the city of Osage Beach City Clerk and they said, thank you for, for hosting their meetings here and they made several, everybody that I spoke with made compliments about our facilities. Just more gratification to you all for the wonderful facilities that we do work in. An update on the bullet resistant glass that we had a crack in on the administration side that was covered by the original installer and that was replaced today. So, we've got the bullet resistant glass in. And just a, an update, a couple of years ago, we demolished a house that said he took on the expense to demolish 1196 Gunther, which was an abatement process and they, we were refunded $8,000 of that $10,000 expense and I did receive communications from Tom Goresline, the Camden County Public Administrator, that that property has sold and within 45 days, we will receive the remaining $2,000. But I, just a, a big thanks to him for following up on that and staying on top of it. That's all I have.
Very good, thank you. All right, Human Resource, Cindy Lee.
Yeah, I just thought I'd update everybody. We have two police officer positions, six 911 communications officer positions out. We have, we should have hopefully two contention offers out early next week for 911 operators. We have an offer pending for a police officer that would just put us down to recruitment for one. And then our last two sewer employees, we had, of course, our crime analyst came from Hawaii, the last two sewer, one came from Florida and one came from Arkansas. So, our applicants are coming from all across the nation, so.
Very good, thank you. City Park, Eric Gregory.
Yeah, just a reminder, I know we have Bike Fest going on this weekend, but the Parks and Recreation Department is coordinating the Osage Beach Citywide Rummage Sale, which is Saturday from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. You can go to the city website and download the participant map, the bingo game card, which we'll have going on and other information. And there will be quite a few sales set up on City Hall parking lot out here, so please stop by and we encourage city residents and visitors to stop by City Hall and visit the sales out in the community and find some bargains.
Thank you. Economic Development Specialist, Mitchell Boone.
The past couple of weeks, I've been traveling around, going to quite a few different conferences, went to the Governor's Conference on Economic Development. That's why you didn't see my face at the last board meeting, as well as just attended MML, which was a fantastic conference and people know who Osage Beach is and we're doing some great things down here. So, just wanted to share that with you. Yesterday, a couple of other members of us here attended Leadership, Camden County, and so that is, day one's underway. That was a blast. I'm looking forward to what the next year will hold as I keep getting involved down here, but definitely want to thank you guys again for this opportunity down here and in the next coming week, I'll be off to Herman and at that conference sponsored by the University of Missouri that is promoting new entrepreneurs in today's workforce. So, busy traveling around, but thank you guys again and we're doing some good stuff down here in Osage Beach and go Chiefs.
All right, thank you. Alderman Rucker, please.
Well, your attorney stole my fire here. I had, I had the brochure for, for Carrie, but congratulations, Carrie, you always represent the city well and you're known for the fact that you know how to do the economical things right for us and keep us, keep our, our numbers looking good. So, I appreciate all the work you've done on that area. And Ron, it was good to hear that we did get our money back off that project. For those of you who don't remember, that was a pet project of mine and, and we worked hard and, and Ron worked very hard and it's, the main thing is we got that area cleaned up, which was a bad eyesore. That's it, thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman Schuman.
All my stuff has already been said, so I have nothing else.
Very good. Alderman Rucker, Becker.
I have nothing, thank you.
All right. Alderman Osteen.
I actually had a question for two individuals that are not here.
Well, shoot, don't pass it on to him.
For Dave Van Leer and for Carrie Patterson, I was going to ask if we can get any follow-up on previous discussions we had regarding private roads.
Say that again?
Private roads.
I can answer that.
We had discussed wanting to basically research the residence of those roads and if they had any recorded shared road agreements, which would kind of dictate if those roads already have a legal document regarding the maintenance of that road, et cetera, et cetera.
I can tell you that that research is almost done and we will be bringing another discussion on private roads and our partnership with the Special Road District to the meeting on October 20th. So, it won't be next meeting, although I think that's probably a good thing because we've got a lot going on on the next meeting, but it will be, we will discuss that in detail on October 20th and I will be looking for direction at that meeting as well on moving forward with some of the roads that we may or may not help improve.
Okay, that's all I had.
All right, thank you. Alderman Rose.
First of all, I'd like to thank Alderman Rucker for all the hours he has spent in dealing with these ordinances. I can't imagine reading through all those, but really, really appreciate your work. And Carrie Bell, congratulations again. I also want to thank the opportunity for going to MML. I, again, thoroughly enjoyed the sessions, very interesting, very informative, but most of all, I was so impressed with Margaritaville's service and food and I think it would be really nice if we sent a letter from the city and just extending our appreciation that they really set a model for our community, even though they're not in the city limits, but I just thought they did a tremendous job. Yeah.
Do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Ross.
So I'll be real quick. First of all, Carrie, congratulations, it's very well deserved. Cindy, congratulations on retirement, I highly recommend, I think you'll find it wonderful. And then lastly, I hope we can find a way to devise an ordinance that says whenever there's a conflict with the Chiefs game, the meeting has to adjourn before kickoff. That's all I have, thank you.
Alderman Rucker will be on that.
All right, I just have a couple things. First of all, Kim and I did go down to Grand Lakes in Grove, Oklahoma, I think I told you we were gonna go down there, and that city could not have been nicer. Friday morning, we toured the town, beautiful town, about 7,000 people, then toured City Hall, met the mayor, met their council members, went to Paradise Island for a nice lunch. Next morning, one of the business owners even took us on a boat ride at about 46,000 square acre lake, I mean, beautiful.